Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee. Today is Thursday, March 17, 2022. Happy St. Patty's Day. I'm dressed in blue. Somehow, we're going to change it from green to blue this year. We're in the Nashua-North High School boardroom. And if I can have Ms. Brown take the attendance, please.
Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Jessica Brown, I'm present. We also have an attendance, Mr. Donovan and Mr. Smith from the office, and some special guests as well.
Thank you. What I'd like to have the committee vote on, I'd like to take item number five, Santa Life, and bring it to the beginning of the meeting tonight, if there's no objections, because we have them here going to do a presentation for us. Is there any objection?
No objection.
Okay, thank you. With us, we have the guests from Santa Life here, which is going to be giving us a presentation. And what's going to happen for anybody who's going to watch this now or is going to review it later? We're going to be leaving the boardroom for about four to five minutes because they have a robot machine that's going to sanitize the area. And then we're going to come back and we're going to get some readings and we're going to have the presentation. So with that said, if we all want to leave, we're going to go into the booth and we're going to hang out with Jimmy tonight for about four to five minutes. Isn't he lucky? Okay, so we're going to go in there right now.
Should I leave this one on?
Point for that.
Okay, all right. So if you guys want to join me here, I could do it right here while I sit here. So I'm going to go ahead and demonstrate how to perform a disinfection with the UVD robot brought to you by Santa Life. First step is to press the Disinfect button on the tablet. The next step is to click the Nashua High School North Department. You're going to click the boardroom because that's what we're going to be disinfecting. Then you're going to click Drive to Destination. The robot is now turning on its access to drive to its starting position. Once it gets to its starting position, it will prompt me to open the door for it. Give it a sec. Here it comes. Great. Now it's going to go ahead and drive to its starting position. Then we click Autonomous. We do a regular disinfection for this room. It's going to take roughly four to five minutes. We go through our safety screens. The current, no people in the room. We are going to be leaving the room. All additional entrances have been secured. I have competency and permission. I'm going to click the Operator so we can save the results at the end and we can take a look at what the disinfection has given this room. We'll click Continue. And now we will go ahead and go over to the robot, press the Start button, and then we will vacate the premises.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to orders now 5:20. And we just had the demonstration. And I'm going to ask Matt to kind of go through the cleansing process and parts of the machines that we were looking at while we were in with Jimmy tonight. So Matt, if you can give us a little bit of an upgrade, a demonstration now?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. So what I'm looking at here on the tablet actually is what we like to call the Coverage Map. This is actually going to show you what the room has been disinfected to. In terms of what we just did in about a four-minute time span, we have killed COVID and anything, all the way up to C. diff spores within this room. It was a very brief amount of time. It roughly took four and a half minutes to disinfect this space. But a little bit more about the robot. So the robot contains five actual safety features, with more of a hidden six safety feature. The first one is its 3D cameras, which it uses to detect any human presence. These cameras do not record anything. It's simply for the robot to use to locate any type of obstacles. Sticking with the top of the robot, there are four PIR sensors, or Passive Infrared Sensors, that detect heat and body movement, which is 360 degrees all the way around. The third feature is the Walk Detection, which uses the LiDAR sensors along the bottom. So for example, if the robot doesn't pick up any heat or movement with the top sensors and they can see someone's feet, the robot will shut its lights off to ensure safe surroundings. The fifth feature is the actual tablet that the robot comes standard with. It's on a gyroscope. So if someone were to want to forget something in their classroom and they walked in and the robot was operating and that tablet were to move or jiggle or anything, the robot would shut its lights off to ensure safe surroundings in that area. The fifth and final safety feature would be the two Emergency Stop Buttons, one on the front and one on the back. And then, like I mentioned, the sixth hidden safety feature is that if one of those features do not work, then the robot is not going to function. However, with that being said, with the robot, what the robot can do is it can connect to the high school's Wi-Fi and allow me remote access into it so I could help diagnose any type of challenges that the custodial staff is having. And we can ensure a smooth transition into the workflow of the custodial staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have a presentation tonight, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so whoever's going to give the presentation and whoever's going to speak, I'm just going to ask you to please give your name so we have it on the record each time?
Yes.
Okay. So with that said, who's going to be giving the presentation?
My name is Toly Chair. I'm the co-founder of Santa Life, and I'll be doing majority of the presentation along with Chris Slingerland.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so if we want to stop at the presentation, do we think we need to turn the lights off?
I think it's fine. He told me that it was fine.
Sure. Well, one, thank you, everyone, for allowing us to have the opportunity to present to the Nashville School Board. We're very humble and appreciative of the opportunity. I feel we, as Santa Life, will provide immediate value and extreme application for your air quality needs. So a little bit about Santa Life. The company has been around for 30-plus years, operating as northeastern industry. We have serviced locally, regionally, providing water purification over the last 30 years to residential homeowners. Over the past three-plus years with the advent of COVID, our air purification disinfection business had really ramped up throughout B2B business. What makes us unique is that we are a value-added solution provider that has tremendous experience providing high-tech technologies, such as the UVD technology and also Active Pure technology, to provide a multiple-layer approach of protection on top of what the schools or businesses have done already. So our value proposition is that we provide a robust technology in terms of air purification that's active. Majority of the technology that's out there on the market is passive. We combine with the HVAC technology that's out there already, which is passive, we allow air to be purified in an active approach. In addition, we allow sustained in-person learning. With our technology, we have shown that the level of absenteeism have decreased over time using our technology, plus the multiple-layer approach that we put in. With the usage of the technology of UVD, we allow a rapid response to any outbreak. So in a scenario where you have an outbreak in a school, rather than sending individuals in there and potentially being re-infected with COVID, you could send the robot in and do a rapid response and disinfect the room. It will also give you a peace of mind. You know, on top of the robust process that Sean and his team have already put in, you're putting in a multiple-layer approach to prevent any risk that an outbreak could happen. In addition, with the robot and also the air purification, it would help with the shortage of staff. With the robot, as you can see, fully autonomous, could do a lot of disinfection. With our initial meeting with Sean, we noticed that the facility team is only doing cleaning of the room by taking out the trash and really depending on the teacher and the student to wipe down the desk. With the robot, you could still do the cleaning of the room or taking out the trash, but the robot will provide the disinfection as well. Measurable RIs. With the robot, you will have measurable RIs in terms of what's being disinfected, the doses you see that's being exposed to. In addition, with our air purification technology, you should be able to save on filter costs and energy bill as well. And last but not least importantly, by putting this multiple-layer approach, it will continue to have Nashville as a top-ranking city to live and also to come for school as well. This is some of the traction that we have done. We have worked with leaders in education across the country and have made a significant amount of traction. Over the last two years, we have acquired about 1,700 clients. And out of those 1,700 clients, 700 are in the education space. One, the problem that, as we have seen across the country, particularly in education, is that with the shortage of staff and what's going on in the world revolving around COVID, not only do you have to worry about technology, remote learning, shortage of staffs, shortage of teachers, but also communicating back to the public on what you're doing. So what we have done over the last few months is really take that communication aspect out of it, assist in the communication aspect. What we have done with school recently is we work with the PR department and really communicate what the school have done effectively to all the stakeholders as well. We will send out a press release for the school. We work on social posting and any other messaging that the school would like to portray to all the parents and stakeholders. A little bit about the technology. What is Active Pure? Active Pure is an air purification technology that's actively going out and scrubbing the air for contaminants real-time with people in there. It has shown that it's highly effective and also highly safe for individuals to be in the room as well. In addition to third-party testing, we have extensive real-world testing that back up our claim. We have done testing with your school as well. So back in July of last year, sometime in July, we did testing on the Nashville High School Room C and Nashville Ledge Elementary. We did a pre- and post-test. So in the pre-test, what we did was we took ear sample of rooms in Room C in Nashville High School and Room 7 in the Ledge Elementary and took the air quality in those rooms with the current existing infrastructure. Two weeks later, we went back and took the same air quality in those rooms, but putting our technology in there. What we have shown is that we're able to reduce on average about 75% of the viral load that's in the room. And this is consistent with what we have seen against all the testing we have gone across the country. On average, we're reducing the viral load by 60% to 70% across the country. And this is going back to my earlier comment on sustained in-person learning. This is a testing that we've done in Dallas, Lamp lighter School District, right, Chris?
My name is Chris Slingerland with Santa Life, yes.
Okay. And early on, the Lamp lighter School District really only wanted a few units inside their classroom, and they only did surface testing. And what we have shown on the pre- and post-testing is that we're able to remove about 96% to 98% of the viral that's on the surface as well. In addition, what they did as well, once they had the units in there, they did a comparison over a year on the average of absenteeism versus what they had experienced. Now, there was a 50% reduction in level of students being absent. Here's the kind of summary of what they did. We did about 17 surface sample. We did Phase 1 installation. Two days later, we did a post-testing as well. And from the post-testing result, we were able to show that we had a 96% to 98% reduction. In the spring of 2020, after the pandemic ceased, the school decided to transition to 25% remote learning. With the response to COVID, with the effectiveness of the testing that we had shown them, the school actually ordered more units to put inside the classroom. And ever since then, they had a 90% return of people in-person learning. So what this means is that with the units in, they were able to sustain 90% of in-person learning and have really limited their student being absent at all. And this would be the Santa Life induct proposal. Chris, do you want to talk a little bit more about it?
I was just going to briefly interject. So in the proposal that you're seeing now, Toly had mentioned throughout the beginning of our conversation, more of like that two-phase approach to creating a healthy, safe environment within the school district. And as we were going through the first couple slides, I really wanted to point out that we're going to get into more of the meat and potatoes of what we're recommending throughout the district. So as you see on this page here, our first solution that we'd like to present to the school district is our air purification, which is coupled with surface disinfection as well. And this is the induct proposal. So Carolyn and I started this relationship with the school district with portables initially. I want to say, goodness, probably about a year ago or so. And we started off with having the opportunity to do a demo. And I believe that was in Ledge Street, if I'm not mistaken, or it was Ledge Street. And we currently, here in the Nashville School District, had a portable solution in place. But it really wasn't giving them what everyone was looking for, that safety, that protection, right? The unit wasn't working at the potential of what they wanted it to. So we were able to bring in 12 to 15 portable solutions with Active Pure technology. And we let the school district demo them in place, right? And it was powerful. So we ended up working through that and supplying the district with portable solutions. And that's when we had the opportunity to introduce our whole induct proposal system to treat every piece of square footage in a building, okay?
And the proposal's based on the multiple-level approach, right? With the air system is allowing for us to have in-person classrooms and participate in a safe manner. And at night, what we're hoping to accomplish is to have a deep disinfection with the robot so when people are walking back in the classroom, they're walking to a hospital-grade environment. So you really have multiple-layer approach on top of the air exchange that you're getting on the HVAC side as well.
Perfect.
Some of the key benefits of the induct is obviously improving indoor air quality. But the technology have also shown to have effective success on surface cleaning as well. Technology is proving to be effective with our FDA laboratory testing and also the real-world testing we have done. In addition, a lot of technology could be used with the government funding as well, so minimal impact on the national taxpayer. It's a white-glove service on the induct solution from point A to point Z. We are going to project manage the whole installation and make sure that all licensing permitting on us and making sure that minimal interruption to your business as well. It's very easy, ongoing management, improve ongoing management of the HVAC system. Every two years, you would need to replace itself, so minimal maintenance. In addition, as I mentioned, we have shown that without technology, you could really save an energy bill by recycling the air instead of bringing out a lot of outside air in. So you save on energy costs. And also, you could probably potentially use a low-end filter as well and avoid having to pay for the high cost of MERV 13 versus MERV 8. Here's the proposal we have. The proposal is really for five of the schools building here at about a million square foot, which is about $1.25 per square foot for a total of $1.4 million. In addition, on top of this with this proposal, we are going to provide six years of the maintenance as part of the package as well. So for the next six years, there won't be additional maintenance costs on this unit. We will come in, we'll provide you the units, and we'll work with Sean and his team on replacing it. Any questions so far on the air side?
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Lampier? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, you mentioned that this is like hospital-level cleanliness. So I was wondering if any of the hospitals in the area actually use your system?
So on the air side, the technology is in a device that's been approved by the FDA. It's a Class II medical grade device. So meaning that it's a unit that's being used in hospital and using the same technology that you're using, right? That we're proposing inside the technology. I'll let Matt speak on the hospital around here, but I know UVD is really big in Europe and also in the hospital sector as well.
Hi, this is Matthew Tooms with UVD Robots. Yes, so there are several hospitals in Europe specifically. The European Union actually went ahead and they have 300 units in their hospitals all across the European Union. Here in the States, we have Moffitt Cancer Research Center. We have Kiowa Hospital. We have UHS out in Nevada. And then a couple other smaller kind of rural hospitals, smaller hospitals. And of course, we're always working to get into more hospitals. But the European Union is something to note just because of the sheer size of that project.
And then on the air side, I know Lower General is doing a trial run on the medical grade unit in the operating room on the air purification side as well. And also, the clinic clinics is doing a two-year clinical trial test to show the efficacy of our product in reducing HAI's, hospital-acquired infections. And they're doing a test that will show that not only the technology is highly effective in removing HAI's, but also highly safe to put the most vulnerable patient through.
So you mentioned CFUs as a unit of bacteria. So how many CFUs does it usually take for someone to become ill?
That I can't answer directly. When we did the air quality test, we just took a random sample of air and whatever was in the air is what we're capturing. What we're able to show is that the number CFU count decreased from 70%. So we don't know exactly what's in the air. And to answer your question, I don't know. The CFUs all depend on what type of bacteria or fungus they're exposed to. So it might be different from each environment in the room, whether it's in a classroom or gym. The CFUs could be totally different.
Right. And just to kind of piggyback off of that, that's a complex question, right? Depending on what type of pathogen, right? Bacteria. We don't know what's in our air. I should mention, too, when we did the air quality pre-test and post-test, really where the threat or any type of threat that could come to us as a population when we're in a room, we bring that threat in that dynamic environment. So when we did your pre-test and your post-test, it was with a populated room. So in theory, if we're sitting in this room and there's no environment hazard in the room prior to us being in that room, we're bringing in pathogens, bacteria, whatever that may be, right? So when we do that test, we're picking up what's in the air. We can provide the detailed report with what that breakdown was.
But I think what we have demonstrated is that obviously, the lesser the CFUs in the air, the less likelihood that you will get sick or get injured, right? So by us reducing the level of CFUs, that kind of mitigate your chances, your probability of getting sick. And by reducing by 70%, that's what we have done, what we have shown.
Okay, I have another question as well. You showed a slide that demonstrated the absenteeism rate in a school had gone down. That one there, I wasn't sure what school that was.
It was the Lamp lighter School District in Dallas, Texas.
And how big is that school district?
This was one of our client that we had, our manufacturing client, in 2018. So this was pre-pandemic. We installed it in several rooms. Then as a response to COVID, because of the testing they have done, they installed it throughout the school district.
Were they able to prevent any shutdowns at all? And do you have any information on how many students got COVID while?
Yes. Yeah, we can get you that data.
We have the detail.
That was a big thing for them to point out. No, we actually have a couple other school districts that would be willing to share that information as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any more questions? Oh, Mr. Smith.
Well, first, I'll make a point. You've also installed, I don't know if it's the robots or the induct system or the ground-based units or all of above, but Philadelphia, the entire school district has your systems installed. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. We have a pretty in-depth. Your district was one of our first air quality tests locally. We really wanted to separate ourselves and showcase how powerful technology that we can install within our surroundings can make an impact, right? And the initial air quality test, that was done by a third-party air quality company, right? So it was an independent study. But the Philadelphia study, it was a pretty intense study. It was surface and air. We could share that data, too, as well.
The test result on average, whether it's Philly or whatever region we have provided, is that the result is typically around 60% to 7% reduction in viral load in the air. And I mentioned about the air quality in different regions. Air quality in Philadelphia is different from air quality in California. Air quality is different from in Nashua. And for us to show that regardless of what the outside variables are coming in, we're showing about a 70% reduction on number CFU count from beginning to the end.
And I wish we would have put this in on the presentation, the hierarchy of pathogens, right? So if you're looking at a triangle, fungi is on the very tip-top of the hierarchy of pathogens, very difficult to kill, eliminate. On the bottom are viruses, right? So envelope viruses. So SARS-CoV-2, for example, because we all... So SARS-CoV-2, for example, because we all survive that together and been through that together, that's an envelope virus, right? So on a, we can't go into a school or an environment and release a virus. So what we, what we're measuring is that bacterial load and fungi load mold, right? So we can eliminate those factors or dramatically reduce that in environment, which is more difficult to eliminate, right? Then what kind of impact can we have on a virus? Which we have the virus testing as well. Results from a lab.
I think what, Chris, in summary, what he's saying is that, you know, if you're able to kill or remove more of the difficult pathogens, it would be extremely easy, easier to remove some of the easier stuff like envelope viruses.
Correct.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just two other points, which they may have alluded to, but I don't think they expressly said it. So we're currently installing MERV 13 filters still in all our HVAC systems. If we were to install the induct systems and perhaps the other systems they're proposing, we could go back to MERV 8 filters. That decreases our costs, maintenance costs, by about 2/3 of, just for filters. So it's, that's not insignificant. And really, the unknown unforeseen cost is the cost on the mechanical system. So imagine a fan blowing against my fingers and if you're on the other side of my fingers, you're going to feel air on the other side, right? That's a MERV 8 filter. You know, I close my hand and push the same air against it, that's the MERV 13 filter. So you have a fan pushing against a brick wall, basically, a very solid surface, has to work very hard. I know a lot of other, a lot of other school district increased their fan speed to try to get the same amount of air pushed into the classrooms for greater airflow. We didn't do that. We thought that that was just going to put a severe load on our mechanical systems and potentially shorten their life. So, but we did go with the MERV 13 filters and we went through the countermeasures with this group here. So I think those are two very important points, you know? Get really the bigger filters and, you know, save the mechanical systems.
Sean has a really good point because in our pre-test, we tested what you had installed. So we had MERV 13s. And then when we did our post-test, we removed your MERV 13 and dropped that zone down to a MERV 8. So those testing results, it's 100% outside air that you guys are pulling in as well, that the district's pulling in. So those results were with dropping you down from a MERV 13 down to a MERV 8. And that's that impact.
And we were still able to achieve that 7% reduction with a low-end filter.
Right.
Ms. Brown, you have a question?
This is actually for Mr. Smith. Right now, what's the frequency that we're replacing the MERV 15s?
MERV 13s replace four times a year.
Four times a year?
Every three months.
So maybe under this, would we have to be replacing the MERV? If we were able to switch back to the MERV 8s, would it still be on the same frequency?
It'll do it every three months.
And actually, I just remember this from the budget meeting the other night, you were talking about there has been an escalated energy cost, correct, this year since we've been switching over to the MERV 13s? Was that a little bit of an uptick?
So we changed contracts. We have a brand-new contract that we settled and there was an increase in costs. I know electrical costs have gone up, but that's from the, you know, Eversource. It's not by us. I couldn't tell you, I wouldn't want to guess on what the impact is of installing the MERV 13 filters. I know what systems have had to work harder, but for me to tell you what that cost is, I...
So really, the more the concern is the longevity of the machinery and the maintenance upkeep?
Yes.
Okay. And for the proposal, for the 1.4 million, that is not including the room robots that is for the filter, the filtration system in the ductwork, correct?
That is correct.
And what would be the timeline for installation on something like that?
If Sean, if this was approved, we probably could get it within, you know, I would give myself a little buffer, about a month, a month and a half, we should be able to get this done. We'll do it off-hours, so we're not affecting our school operations.
I don't think I have any quite more questions right now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. You can continue with the presentation.
Sure.
Thank you.
On this section, we're going to focus on UVC robot, the proposal. Matt, you want to talk a little bit about UVC more than I?
This is Matthew with UVD Robots again. So just a little bit about our robotic platform, right? So this robot is a completely autonomous robot that uses LiDAR sensors to basically send out invisible red lasers off walls and then the, it'll bounce off the wall, collect all the data within the robot, and create a 2D floor plan of the school in order to then go back and drop disinfection points in each position. The good thing to note about that is that once we do the mapping and the plot, the point plotting, those points are going to be there for the longevity of the unit. So just a little background on UVC light. The sun actually emits UVA, UVB, and UVC light. UVA and B is what gives us our lovely tan skin color, or in my case, a really bad sunburn. UVC actually is completely absorbed up to 95%, not completely, apologies. 95% of it is absorbed by the Earth's atmosphere, thus leaving just about everything under the sun without immunity to it. And what UVC light does is it actually disrupts the DNA and the RNA of the bacteria and the virus, which renders it incapable of replicating, which means that those colonies that are so, like those fungi colonies and the C. diff spores and all of that, they cannot replicate. And that is where you get those, you know, that's where you get really sick is when those colonies start to build. And by using UVC light, you are really taking that colony and completely rendering it incapable of growing.
Yeah, thank you. You know, as Matt had mentioned, you know, what are some of the benefits of UVC? Obviously, it is increasing the overall healthiness of an indoor space. You know, it is also autonomous and you'll be streamlined through the tablet. In addition, will enhance outbreak prevention as well. Some of the specification on the UVD robot, it operates on a fully charged battery, two hours. It covers up to about 150,000 square feet. Charging time takes about five hours to complete. The light bulb is minimal maintenance. It should last up to 10,000 hours. In addition, it has its built-on Wi-Fi as well, so it does not need to be dependent on any external Wi-Fi. You know, I believe the, if you were to disinfect one of the, you know, hallway arm, you're looking at about like anywhere from 30 to 35 minutes, you know, in term of cost saving, in term of a labor saving, and will provide you a hospital-grade disinfection. In addition to just having the UVC product, you know, we also provide a very comprehensive service package. And what that means is that depending on the service package that is chosen, you could either get a white glove delivery, meaning that if any parts is broken or anything's wrong with it, we'll cover it at no charge at all. And that would be the Elite package. On the Alliance package is, you know, a combination of, you'll get all the software update, you will have the Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 support from Sound Life, UVD, and also Denmark. What it doesn't cover is any type of materials or podcasts as well. The first package is Select Care, which is basically it'll provide any update of softwares and then you'll get Tier 1 support from Sound Life. So the Sound Life robot proposal is really for 12 schools. And the reason we came up with the proposal is these are the schools that have not been identified to have the air purification technology. With that said, for the 12 robot, you know, the price of one robot, if you were to buy, purchase 12 of them, would be $95,000, $100, and total cost of about $1.1 million. If you were to, depending on what service package you select, you know, with the Elite package annually, you're looking at about $147,000 for all 12 robots. Or if you were to select a three-year package, it's around $400,000, and a five-year package is around $600,000 on top of the 1.1 on the robot.
One thing to mention about that as well is going back a little bit to the service plan. You know, one thing that I think it's very important to note is we're not just going to drop these robots off and just be like, hey, good luck. We are actually going to be there every step of the way. We're going to teach, we're going to actually train users on how to operate and how to fit it into their workflow effectively. And then we are also going to do super-user training, which means we select anywhere from three to four people throughout the district who are the ones who are, have really mastered this type of technology. And those people will be selected by the UVD people who will be doing the install. And Sound Life people will all get together and make a decision based off of that. And those people will be, you know, they will address any challenges immediately and if they aren't, if they are incapable of addressing that, then they will go ahead and reach out to Sound Life. And one other piece I really like to bring up is the fact that this does fit quite seamlessly into a workflow. A good example I like to use is, so a lot of the custodial staffs will see this robot and say, is this taking my job? The answer is no, you know? So they are always, the custodial staff is always going to be an important part to any type of school district. And one thing I can say, so for example, they are going to go into room 101, they're going to go wipe down the tables, take out the trash, and just make sure that that room is tidied up. Then once they're done with that, they can go ahead and send the robot in. And while the robot is doing its disinfection, which roughly takes anywhere for about eight to 10 minutes per classroom, during that time, they're able to go to room 102, do that manual wipe down, the trash removal. And by the time they've done that, they're able to, the robot will be done, ready to go, and they can go into room 102 and continue that process all the way throughout in order to get their disinfection and their manual cleans done.
And Matt, maybe you could talk a little bit about, you know, some districts depending. I know talking with Sean, we have, I think, third shift here, so this school, there is someone in, you know, the building. But in some cases, we have schools that will do autonomous clean scheduled, correct? You do have that ability.
Yes, you do. So for example, if you wanted to do, say, for example, all of the hallways on the first floor, right? And you wanted to disinfect those at, does anybody know what time the last person were to leave a school? Does anyone know?
What level school? High school, it's around the clock. Elementary school, it's 10:30 at night.
Okay, perfect. So we'll use an elementary school for this example. So say, for example, you wanted to disinfect all of the hallways at 12 o'clock at night, right? You can actually set the robot up to, you set it to its starting point, it will sit there, and then you set it to go, okay, I want you to start at 12 o'clock. It will check its surroundings, make sure that no one's there, and right at 12 o'clock, those lights will start to warm up. And then from there, the robot will travel down the hallways, do everything it needs to do, and then you'll set it to go back to the charging station. So that way, when the custodial staff comes in in the morning, the next morning, it'll be on the charging station, charged and ready to go for that next day.
And then another great benefit, keep on bringing this up because it happened. We had school districts that were, you know, fighting their way through the pandemic. You know, they really wanted, their focus was to stay in school. And why we picked some of the schools that we picked is because of the traffic, the community of that school. So if we take a high school, high school is very, very busy all the time, and I don't know if there'd be any downtime. But if we take an elementary school or possibly a middle school, and we have a break or block of 90 minutes, and we have 10 classrooms that are vacant for that 10, you know, for whatever that hour and a half, right? We had school districts that were during the height of, you know, a surge, they were going in and they were actually cleaning in between these 90-minute blocks. And, you know, can we be as effective with, you know, a disinfection, you know, wipe? Maybe one could argue, but I don't know. I don't, you know? But if I send that robot in, you know, it really come down to the point where we're protecting the protectors, protecting our faculty, protecting our staff, protecting our children. You know, we don't need a pandemic to have the importance or see the importance in that. I think what the pandemic has done is really put a microscope, right, on that level. Because what, you know, we have that ability to be able to do this, why not do it? So that was a really good takeaway I got from that client as well. Like, if you have a big event, say we had, goodness, I can't think of a sporting event, right? We had influx of people in that room, and I want to hit that. Maybe we had a spirit rally, or I think that's what we used to call it back in the day or something, I can't remember. But we could run, we could literally do a manual, we have the ability to actually do a manual, you know, clean on that. So it's really a great tool. And that's why we picked those buildings that you see that we chose because of that activity level and being able to have that flexibility within those schedules to make an impact.
I have a question. When you say the proposal includes a six-year supply of replacement cells, is that just for those, the high schools, Fairgrounds Middle School, Pennington and Franklin Street School?
It's for the five schools listed on the proposal.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Okay, on that. Mr. Smith, I have a question for you. Let's see, where was I here? On the elementary schools, how would that work with the robots? Would that be during the day when they go out for recess? Something like that? Or is it just be at nighttime, they'd be doing the cleaning? How's that going to work?
You could try to do something during the daytime, but the elementary schools are so busy with kids coming and going.
Okay.
I would suggest it be at nighttime primarily.
And that would be programmed to go into each room? Okay.
You could set up the robot pre-programmed to do the entire school.
Do the entire school.
Exactly. And it's all situational-based, right? So if, say for example, a teacher comes to the custodian and it's like, hey, my kids are going out to recess for the next 30 minutes or whatever, however long recess runs for nowadays, I'd like to have my classroom disinfected. That's a perfect example of how the robot can be used during the day as well. So, and then just ensuring, you know, maybe it's the teacher standing in outside, the outside door and then the custodian being on the other end, right? Even with the safety features, you know, we just like to be extra safe, especially when people are around versus when, if we were to do this later at night, then there wouldn't be the risk of, you know, the kids, the kids forgetting, oh, I forgot my snack for recess, right? And then running into the classroom and neglecting the big red screen, yes, the lights will shut off. But again, we just don't want to run that, we don't want to have the students in the classroom.
I had a video planned. It was a school district down in New Mexico that currently has the largest fleet of our robots. They have 37 of them. Just don't know if we can access the internet here. Can we? It's a two-minute video. It's quick and easy if you guys are interested in seeing it, it's up to you. Or we can send it an email.
Why don't you send it by email?
Yeah, you're eating up your time.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. It's, Ms. Brown, do you have anything?
I just had one question about a case where you have stairs, like a room like this or another thing. Is that like a situation where you have multiple robots or what's going on?
So when I first walked in here, I was like, uh-oh, there's stairs, right? The robot obviously can't walk downstairs yet. But a lot of those places where you walk into an area where, you know, there's stairs right at the front door, odds are there's going to be some type of ramp because it needs to be wheelchair accessible. So with that being said, there's no real challenges to that effect.
In areas where there are stairs and you need to disinfect where the stairs are, what we could do is place a robot in front of the stairs and like let it stay there longer. The longer it stays, the more exposure to UVC it has, and the longer exposure to UVC, the more likelihood that will mitigate those CFU counts.
Absolutely. And I know you guys got to see the autonomous functionality of this robot. However, there is two other functionalities, right? You could do a remote-controlled disinfection, which means we have, so for example, in this room here, we could be up in the production room behind the glass. We have a very good line of sight and we could use the robot's camera to maneuver it with the tablet itself. Or if you really wanted to, to Tolly's point, you could leave it as a static unit. And as we know, light travels, so the further that, the longer that light sits in that position, the more disinfection you get as it goes through that room.
Any other questions, Ms. Lampia?
Yeah, I do have a question. I'm a little confused as to what the proposal we're going to be looking at tonight because we discussed the induct proposal and then we also discussed the UVC proposal. And I just was wondering, I mean, we talked mostly about the robot. I don't, I'm not really clear on how the induction system works.
The induct system is really... The induct system is really for, I believe, when we did this, was really for schools that had access to HVAC and were able to utilize our induct solution. And the robot, I believe, it was for, really for schools that don't have induct and wanted the same level of disinfection or same level of our security that we provide.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, ideally, you would have both. You would have the air during the day, and then at night, you would have the robot coming in disinfecting.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, so, I'm going to throw them a little bit of a curve, because they showed me, honestly, a draft of this, and we had some suggestions on ways to present you some information I thought you could use, such as the benefits of the different systems and whatnot. But one thing, as I've listened to this and I've seen the numbers again, we, and I did back-of-the-envelope-type estimating, we do have six elementary schools that have ducted systems. So, I just throw that out there. That's just another possibility is install the induct systems, and that's fewer robots. Sorry, I know you're the robot guy, but, I mean, it's, I mean, it's just, I mean, so, I guess maybe the question that comes out of that is, and he said, ideally, you have both. I doubt that we can afford both. Money guy over here. The comparisons between the two, I mean, if you had to pick one or the other, is putting you in a difficult spot perhaps, but...
I mean, they both work in different ways. The air is really for, if you're having in-person people in the room right then and there, and it will mitigate, you know, potential viral load. Like, as Chris mentioned, as we walk in the room, we're producing viral loads. As we talk, all this coming out, what the air is doing is mitigating it that real time. What it doesn't really provide is a instant, like, disinfection, right? The UV robot is a staple in the hospital industry to reduce hospital-acquired infections. What it will do is it will eliminate majority of the viruses with a short-time exposure to UVC. So, in this case, this will be used for really, for deep disinfection at night that will replace any type of disinfection using a cloth, wipe, or electric zac spares. While, if you look at the air, it's really more for in-person classroom and having ability for people being in a classroom with the technology on. But it doesn't provide you that deep disinfection that you would have with a UVC robot.
So, it seems like this would be ideal, I mean, obviously, if you weren't able to cycle it into a nightly cleaning, but also if you knew that you had an outbreak of cold or flu or strep, strep throat, or whatever, in a, in a classroom, you could bring this in?
Yes, but what it wouldn't do is when, when that strep throat or MRSA is in the classroom being spread, it's not, obviously, you can't turn the UVD robot on at the same time. With the active peer technology, you could mitigate that, you know, risk. So, when I said that, it really is best to have both, because, one, is you're having protection during the day, right, as people are in the room, and then at night, you send in the robot to clean up anything that's left over, and you're walking back into a hospital-grade environment. And then, you continue on the next day as well. You know, next day, you walk in, more people come in the room, you have your active peer technology protecting you and preventing, mitigating any potential viral outbreak. And at night, you bring the UV do robot and clean it.
And to that, to that effect, you know, I think it's really important to note that that peace of mind, especially over the past two years, has really been a really big thing that's come out of this whole, whole situation that we've been a part of, right? So, I know there is a labor shortage, whatever it may be, this robot's never going to call in sick, never going to ask for time off, you know? But, you know, it's going to be consistent all the way through, and it's going to, you know, it's going to, it's going to give that person who knows, okay, this room has been, there's been an outbreak in this, in this area, I'm going to send this robot in, then afterwards, I'm going to feel safe enough to go in there and really be able to feel safe, you know? And that's a big, that safe word is really a big thing that people are concerned about nowadays.
Let me ask you a question. When we were in the booth with Jimmy, and you had your tablet, and you had the picture of the disinfecting.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you still have that on your tablet?
No. So, what I did was, I submitted that report.
Okay.
Because the, another benefit of this robot is there's a full reporting system along with this robot, meaning, you're going to know who disinfected the classroom, when it was disinfected, how long it was in there for, how much UVC light was actually exposed in that room. So, you're going to get a wide array of statistics. It shows up in numerical form, and it shows up in graph form as well.
Because the reason I was asking, I would love to have that picture in color sent to us by email for the rest of the board to be able to see what took place in that five-minute period.
Really?
And what it, what it picked up. Also, since Mr. Smith came up with six schools that could have the air exchange filter with the HVAC, I guess I would like to see the numbers run on that. And let's say you had an outbreak. Could you take this robot and bring it to another school, or you can't transport it from one school to the other if you need it?
If that's what you want to do, and you want to get a truck with a lift gate, or something that you could push it up in, you could put it back in its crate. The only, the scenario where, that is a scenario where you'd have to use the manual-controlled function, meaning, using a direct line of sight or just the three cameras that are involved. And of course, you can, you could do a disinfection there as well.
Okay, and, so, if you have these in the HVAC system, and, so, it's cleaning the air continuously.
Yes, it is, correct.
It's like being on an airplane now.
Yes.
That is just, they're saying airplane air is better than anything else now, and it used to be the worst. So, this way, it's going to be around the clock. So, if there was an outbreak, chances are, it might start killing the germs prior to, as people are starting to get sick. Because I know my biggest complaint was, and listening to parents, was doing the remote learning, and kids were not in the classroom, and everybody was afraid to get back into a classroom because they were afraid that everybody was going to get COVID. But prior to COVID, we had the flu. And we also had the Norwalk virus, which is a stomach virus, which sometimes was more deadly to kids and elderly than COVID, because if you look at the stats on recovering from it, it's much better than the flu and the stomach virus. So, this would help with, of course, COVID and the flu is all part of that cold virus. And it would help with stomach viruses and C. diff, I understand about C. diff, which if somebody came into school with a kid that didn't even know that they have, and started touching surfaces.
Exactly.
That bacteria will go through very quickly, like MRSA.
Exactly, and that's another one. MRSA is another big one, especially in the gyms.
Yes, yeah.
Any, any type of indoor turf facility, you know, any indoor bubbles, you know, that's a big piece, right? So, you could take this robot, say, for example, you had a turf, turf field, right? And you wanted to disinfect all the way around it. What you could do is you could have the robot roll around, and you can make sure that you disinfect that area, you know, and that's mitigating the MRSA. And then locker rooms, that's another big place. And I know, from, from high school especially, you know, those locker rooms, especially the boys' locker room, is kind of gross.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's kind of a cesspool of bacteria and viruses, really.
But if you have these in the air duct system, it would be working enough to
It is, yeah.
Try to prevent any big outbreaks.
So, the advantage of having an induct unit, and I'll show you like the FSC of it. You know, some of the third-party testing we have shown is that it's able to remove about 99.9% of COVID within three minutes. So, it is mitigating COVID as you're in there. But let me tell you, the FSC of the UVC robot is that, you know, within 10 to 12 seconds, you're able to remove SARS-CoV-2 within bypassing. However, obviously, you know, we can't be in the same room when the UVC robot's on. So, you, you know, when I say it's a multiple approach, layer of approach to protecting against SARS-CoV-2 or any other type of viruses that you're protecting from, is that you have the active peer technology during the day as people in there. And when people aren't occupied in the room, you send in the robot to eliminate anything that might be difficult for the technology to reduce, the air technology to reduce.
Yeah, so, it's like active and react, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, my question, okay, and we'll see if we can wrap this up a little bit, because, so, we would have to rework everything because we've got six more elementary schools. And then, you'd have to kind of focus on how many robots we would need. And so, if you did more units, that six bulbs would... Proposal includes six-year supply of replacement cells.
Yes.
Would be on all schools, even anything new.
Yes.
And any deals we can get with the robots?
Talking to the right man right here.
I'm always one with these deals. Let's negotiate a good deal here.
To answer your question, yes.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Just real quick, you mentioned turf fields. So, we only have one, it's outside field. So, I mean, are you suggesting that we would use a robot on the exterior turf field?
No. I was, I was more referencing to like an indoor facility, meaning, like, a closed bubble that has maybe a gym, couple tennis courts, like, that sort of, with a track surrounding it. I apologize for not being more clear about that.
He saw another use.
Yeah, I know. I know, he's like, whoa, whoa.
I'd say Lisa would love one of those.
Yeah. No, but outdoor use is a no-go, just because of all the electrical components that go on with this. Water and electricity do not go very well together. Even if it is a dry day, we know how New England is and how fast the weather can change.
And we're not putting a bubble up. And we're not, we, I think we talked about that at one time in closing Stellars, I mean, a long time ago, but that didn't happen. Any more questions from the committee?
I have, I have a question. I'm sorry. So, I was looking at the pricing for the robots, and it says the total price for 12 units would be $1,141,000. And then, along with that, we need to pick a package, a service package? So, if, if we were to get the Elite package, that would be an additional $147,000 every year?
Annually for 12 robots, yes. And that's assuming if you pick the Elite. If the, the thing that the school need to decide is, do you really need the Elite versus the Alliance, which is, you know, you will get full-level support from UVD, us, and also its all software update, and then, you know, buy the parts if needed.
The Alliance price isn't listed in this sheet?
We, we just put the Elite, but we, yes, we could show the Alliance pricing as well.
Can I just ask, do you know offhand how much it is?
Sure. One-year Alliance per robot is about $9,570. And obviously, there's discount available, a volume discount for robots.
So, $9,000 per robot at 12 robots?
That's on a one-year. So, if you look at that same sliding scale, if, I think when we had discussed, you know, this tool, I think we were looking at possibly buying the warranty ahead of, you know, for the, whatever it would be, say, a three-year or a five-year period, right? You know, I think that that's, that would also give you your maximum discount. So, if you look at that slide that we put together on just our presentation, you'd follow that same scale of percentage breakdown. So, you said...
Yeah, I think part of the logic behind the Elite package for, you know, whether it's one-year, three-year, or five-year, is that, you know, utilizing the government funding that's available, there won't be any additional burden on the district going forward, meaning that, you know, any service or parts will be covered with the current government funding. So, that way, there's no, at least for the next few years, there won't be additional outflow from the taxpayers in Nashville.
But, once the SRF funds are gone, say, like, four years down the road, we would have to come up with the money to service the robots, right? The annual fee there?
With the five-year package, it's five years, yes. So, in this case, we, the school, what district would have to, you know, come up with additional funding.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, you know, one of the ROIs, I'm working with a school district down in Texas, and, for example, they spend about $55,000 a month in chemical spend for sanitization, right? So, we found out here that it has been a challenge. But if we looked at that budget, they're going to reduce their chemical spend by about 20 to 30%. So, for them, that's a big ROI, you know, straight across the board. So, I think if you were to look at what would the potential ROI be, not, just, even just in the labor aspect, right? I think you would, you'd be able to find where you're saving, and I think you might, you actually probably end up coming out ahead, you know? And obviously, I don't have those figures, so I can't...
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay, any other questions from the committee? And we'll get an update showing six schools eliminated with robots, so, be less robots and more of the original plan with the high school, those other five schools?
Yes, we'll provide you an update.
Okay, since Mr. Smith figured it out, that we don't need, wouldn't need 12 robots, you know, those robots for other schools. Okay.
Really quickly, I know you mentioned that you wanted to see that heat map or coverage map. Since you guys are still going to be here afterwards, would it be okay to send a different coverage map, but it's kind of the same concept? Or what would you, would you like me to do another one, another disinfection, and so I can get the exact one from this room? Or is it okay just to see what it would look like? And then, I can do like a brief explanation below, explaining what type of disin, what type of, level of disinfection you get all the way down? Or what would you like to see?
I think that would be okay because of time-wise with the meeting.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, I'll get something over to them for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Could even hop down, the robot will be here. So, if Sean could let us in at some point after hours tomorrow, like, after 3:00, we could actually pick a vacant room, could do a bathroom or a locker room, and actually provide that, if you'd like.
You should definitely do the locker rooms.
Yeah, you totally can.
I was just going to say that, the locker rooms.
When we did the initial demo at Nashville South, I'm like, do you guys want me to do any other rooms? And they're like, well, I think you have to go wrap up with Sean. I'm like, I can tuck the stripes off a zebra.
That would be good, the locker room, because then we could see exactly.
Locker rooms and bathrooms would probably what I would hit, because we could hit both. I mean, it's just our time.
That sounds good.
Cool.
Nobody else. Everybody agree on that, locker rooms and bathrooms?
And then, what Chris will do when he comes back, he'll just take a picture right here of the tablet itself, and then, him and I will work together to create a brief write-up, just explaining to other members what they're actually seeing, and so they have a really high level of understanding of what's going on.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate this presentation, it was very informative.
We appreciate you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll just give them a moment. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay, so, let's go back. Thank you for allowing to put the presentation ahead. I thought it'd be better than having our guests sit. So, now, we'll go back to the structural analysis, the New Hampshire, New Nashville High School North Gym.
Yes, so, actually, the genesis of this was a fire, routine fire inspection that was conducted this winter. They were going through the gymnasiums at this high school and saw some cracking in the walls. And it's nothing new that we have cracks in walls, though they were looking at some longitudinal cracks. They were, they were concerned about them, and they looked at them with my staff. Then, I subsequently looked at it with Jimmy Lett, who's the architect for the middle school project. Do you know him? We had a joint special school building committee meeting, and I took him to the gym before that. He thought that they were, the cracks are primarily superficial, but thought that we should have a structural engineer take a look at it. So, I suggested, asked him to provide a proposal to have their engineer take a look at them. So, the cracks are in the CMU or the cement walls, it's concrete block, very much like what we have in this space. Most of the cracks are very vertical, they're on columns. So, behind the CMU block is a steel column, and that's where the cracks are. When you have CMU, which is cement... When you have CMU, which is cement, that's the steel, they expand at different rates, they settle at different rates, and that's where the cracking is occurring. There's also, that's in both the two gyms, the medium gym and the large gym. And then on the mizzenine, which is where we have the air handling systems, they also saw some cracking in the floors. And I think it's normal cracking, not going to amount to very much, but it's a good idea. It's relatively inexpensive to have somebody take a look at it that knows exactly what they're looking, and they're actually going to bring strain gauges and that sort of thing to measure, to make sure it's okay. So I recommend that we accept the proposal from Harriman, which is dated February 8th, 2022. The fee is $10,350, not to exceed basis, and funding will come from the plant operations account, 91.1, .22, .2620, .54280, which is the buildings and grounds maintenance account.
And we didn't have any, because I see the next one coming up is for $15,000. So we didn't put out an RFP?
Not for this one, I did not.
Okay. And it's just because Harriman is doing everything else?
Yes.
We're having, I have a problem with that, too. That because they're doing everything else, that they should do this also. Ms. Brown, do you have any questions? Or you want to make a motion?
I was going to make a motion. If no one else, do you have any? I move to approve the proposal for architectural engineering services from Harriman and Associates dated February 8th, 2022, not to exceed the amount of $10,350 from the account, plant operations account, 91.1, .22, .2620, .54280.
A second.
Thank you.
All right. And Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Okay. Second item on the agenda is Dr. Crisp Media Center flooring.
So this is again a Dr. Crisp Elementary School Media Center, AKA library. It is at least 1997. It was in place when I first started working here, so a bit older than that at least, and at the end of its service life. We're actually proposing to replace that. It was a rolled carpet, similar to what we have in front of us, but we replaced that with carpet tile, which is actually what we installed at the South High School Media Center last summer. The advantage of doing that is if you have isolated stains here and there, you can just pull out that two-by-two tile carpet and replace it with a new one. We did solicit quotes from local vendors that we knew were in the business. I attached a spreadsheet. We've got three responses, several declined to provide a bid. You can see that the three were there, actually fairly tight grouped as far as dollars are concerned. And I recommend that we award a contract to Dean's Carpet One in the not-to-exceed amount of $15,603.75. Funding from plant operations account, 91.1, .22, .2620, 54280, buildings and grounds maintenance.
Motion's been made.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And second, I'll second it.
All right. Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
And we could just go, all those in favor vote. We don't have, yeah. We don't have to go into, because nobody's by phone, so that'll be a lot easier and quicker. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the gym wood floor refinishing.
Yeah, yes. So incidentally, just on the whole issue of RFPs or not, it's kind of a judgment call on my part on how much I expect the contract will cost. If it's going to be $10,000 or less, then I'd just try to get a good quote from a good known vendor. The structural is slightly higher than I expected. When it gets to be $15,000, $20,000, I try to get multiple quotes from local vendors. If it reaches $50,000 or more, then I do actually send out an RFP that goes on the city website, and anybody in the business can provide a quote or a bid. So in this case, gym floor refinishing didn't come to the level of $50,000, but we did do an RFP. You can see that we've got responses from one, two, three, four, five vendors. We asked them not only the cost to refinish the floors, but one or two quotes, and then also the cost to repair any floorboards that need to be replaced. We decided that we are content, not content, that's the wrong word. We feel that one single coat of the finish will suffice at this point, particularly since the gyms have not been used that much over the last couple of seasons because of COVID. We'll revisit that next year after we've gone through another cycle. But I, so the lowest bid provided all the information we needed, and it was qualified, was New England Sports Floor. I recommend we award a contract to them in not to exceed amount of $17,819. Funding from plant operations account, 91.1, .22, .2620, .53628. That number is a little bit lower, again, than I expected. We did, however, deduct Pennachuck Middle School from the quote because that's being done by the construction contractor.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Smith, for making these motions. It's making our life easier. Donovan?
Is this going to be a three-year, there's three-year bid or just one-year contract?
Well, I would ask that you approve a three-year contract, but I will, but I think we come back every year, particularly if I'm going to ask that we go to a second coat of finish, it's going to increase the cost. But in either case, in any other event, we end up with the same contractor.
Mr. Donovan? So how do you want us to do this, then?
Well, I would suggest that you approve a three-year using the one coat, and then if Mr. Smith decides he wants another coat, then he has to come back for the difference.
Okay.
Yep.
So I would change it, that the Board of Ed approve a three-year contract with one coat ceiling. Is that one coat ceiling? And then everything else would remain the same in there?
And can I follow up? Is that, the $17,819, is that for one year or is that three years annually?
They actually bid, that was for three years. It would not change.
So all those in favor of awarding the contract to New England Sports Floor for a three-year contract with one coat of ceiling for the amount of $17,819, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Can also see, you know, part of the reason I go to RFPs when I do the very wide range in bids.
Right.
So it's hard to say sometimes what you're going to get.
Okay. So the next one on our agenda?
Is toilet partitions. So if you've been to some of the elementary schools, the, most of the partitions used to be made out of metal, usually thin metal, flimsy metal, and over time, it rusts and corrodes and literally starts to fall apart. That's the case at Main Dunstville Elementary. So we're replacing that with a solid plastic. It's similar to what we installed at Fairgrounds Middle School at Sunset Heights and Broad Street when we did those renovations recently. In this case, we reached out to known vendors that we've been working with, and whereas we typically would install these ourselves, we asked them also to provide a price for Did not send an RFP out on this one. We received the four bids. Let's see if I go through this. Been a little while since I looked at this. Not all of them bid installation. In fact, only two of them bid installation. And my recommendation is we award to Northern Innovations not to exceed amount of $21,650. Funding from account, 91.1, .22, .2620, .54280, buildings and grounds maintenance. That is the installed cost for, that we'll replace all of the partitions and all the bathrooms at Main Dunstville Elementary. And in case you're wondering, if we do renovate that school at some point in the future, these partitions will stay in place, or they have the flexibility to be modified to fit any different configuration.
Mr. Smith, I was just wondering, you said that usually you guys, you would install them yourself, and I was wondering why you decided not to this time?
So last year, I spent virtually all my labor at Franklin Street. We're not really built. My department is to do a lot of construction work. We're primarily for maintenance, and we do a lot of preventive maintenance in the summertime. We do, we do small projects here and there. Franklin Street was exhausting for my crew, and we didn't get much else done. So that's why.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so I'll move that we award the contract to Northern Innovations, as Mr. Smith stated, for $21,650.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next piece on the agenda is the Santa Life presentation that we had. Mr. Smith, I read one of your, what did I say? That, where was it that I was reading it?
It was the cover memo accompanying the...
You wrote that I would really listen to this presentation because a lot of our absenteeism. I'm trying to find that sentence again that I just read.
So next to, where's the next to last paragraph in the memo?
Yeah, the use of the Murph 13 filters while improving air filtration also places a burn on the ventilation system. This is because you're trying to push the same amount of air through a denser fabric. This doesn't happen volume-wise. Your fans work harder and the fan life will decrease. With the Santa Life induct system installed, we can go back to using Murph 8 filters.
Till next paragraph talks about the absenteeism.
The huge potential of these systems in this, in the effect on absenteeism. With 80% less bugs swirling around the classroom air, the opportunity for infections goes down accordingly. Coupled with the nightly UV sanitation, the schools will be more germ-free than they have ever been. I encourage you to listen carefully to the proposal presented tonight by Santa Life Tuesday evening. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Smith?
I was just wondering if we could split the motion and maybe approve the induction system and not the, the induct system and not the robot? Or like to take a vote on the two proposals separately?
I don't think we're ready to take a vote yet. This was a presentation. If we're going to move ahead with this, it would have to be the Esser funds. We haven't even got to that point where we've gone to request in the Esser funds these, so I think a motion's a bit premature right now. We are working, I was working the operating budget. We're going to be working on the rest of the Esser funds, and so we'll have to make some decisions. Do we want to do, there'll be a number of items to choose from. We'll have to decide which ones we want to do. But I think what this did was bring forward, this is an option. So, but I think until you get the rest of the other information that we're considering to spend Esser funds on, then you'd make that decision.
And we've also just asked them to bring more information to us, more pricing. So we need that before we can move forward, I think.
Exactly, because I did, I added everything together, and it's two, almost $2.6 million. I've talked about this last year when I was at T-Bones, and I saw their sign out there, and I said, I'd like to inquire about this because if they're doing it in the restaurants, so people feel safer. I have my feeling about this. I think we need to do something about the germs in the classrooms to make the parents and the teaching staff feel safer in it. But I think that with that being said, we have to have the rest of the proposal come back to see where we at, six more elementary schools to have the system installed, and we're dropping it with the robots. And also, I want to know if there's, I know that they've included six years of the, was it the lighting, the bulbs and everything they burn out? I want to see if we could do a little bit better. I mean, maybe with the maintenance contract. So brings, drops the cost. You know me with negotiating, you know? If it could drop it down a little bit better, and especially if they want to use us as like a New England site, too, a big district, to show that, that it works, that I'd like to build something like that into it also, so we can get the cost down for something if we feel that this is an asset to the district at this point in time. But thank you, Mr. Smith, for bringing this to the forefront here. Yes, Mr. Smith?
I can say this because of St. Patrick's Day. I'm a wee bit surprised that, the one question you didn't ask them, it's been kind of on the tip of my tongue. Actually, I did ask them in private. Are you the only game in town? Because we've always talked about RFP, we talked about RFP tonight. Are you the only game in town? If we're going to spend $2 million on something, we should probably send something out on the street saying, okay, we, this is kind of the system we want. And that it may not be necessarily a bid thing, maybe a qualification thing, because they may have the only, for what they're trying to sell, they may have, only have the only one.
Right.
Right? And you can't be comparing apples to oranges. So we'd have to carefully craft what we put out there.
Right.
What we might want to consider doing that.
Absolutely. I don't have a problem. Do you?
Yeah, no, exactly. I mean, and the other thing that the question that was not asked is, what's the cost of running this system? Because even the induct, that's, it's not like you just put it in, it lasts forever. You got to replace parts in there, too. So you need, you need to look at what's the cost today and what's the cost five years from now.
So I guess Mr. Smith can ask that? I guess you're the point person.
So after the five-year warranty is what you're talking about?
Well, the warranty was on the robots, right? What's the, was there a warranty?
The five or six-year came with the induct system.
Right.
And there was another cost for the robots.
Oh, okay.
The Elite?
Yeah, sure. What's it cost after that? And just like any, any package like that, what if you just replace them yourself when they die instead of paying for a package? It's like, I never buy those things on my car. I never buy them on my vacuum cleaner. I just wait, and typically, I win.
Also, I was just thinking, I don't have a problem with the research to see if there's another company out there that offers, you know, because it's only fair. You know, it's fair to us if there's another system, because I remember when I was back on the Board of Alderman, when we had waste manage, was a waste management that came in, I believe it was. No, BFI came in and they wanted to buy the landfill, and we opened it up for discussion with waste management, other companies, because you just can't give it to one. You know, if somebody comes up with a better proposal, we never sold it. You know, but did you want me to do that research, Mr. Smith? Or did you want to do that research?
Well, I guess I'm suggesting when the proper time comes.
Yep.
Because I've already kind of done research. I am kind of sold on the company.
Okay.
But if we're going to spend $2 million, I think we need to put something formal out and solicit.
Hey, you got to see what the other options are.
Yep.
We may not know, I've done some research, but I don't know everything that's out there.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
I think that everybody's asking the right questions right now. The 50% reduction in staff and student absenteeism, I mean, that's a pretty, that's a pretty substantial number, and, you know, the idea of that, many fewer people getting sick. And that was a pre-COVID number when we weren't as concerned with, I think they said it was 2018, that system was installed in that school. 2018, that system was installed in that school. That's some pretty impressive data, quite honestly. But I think also we've got to really talk about the depreciation of the equipment and the, the long-term maintenance of the system after the five years is up. What are, what are we going to do then? So I think it's a good, a good thing to look into and I'm looking forward to hearing more. Thanks.
And I think also we need to take a look at technology in five years from now. Where are we going to be, where are they going to be with the technology? Are they going to be upgrading technologies as it comes along and what's our cost factor to upgrade the systems with that technology? Because right now, I mean, we talk about staff not being in and not having enough staff in the classroom and we've got to put two, three, four classes in the block, e-block, you know? I want to try, I'd like to try to be proactive than reactive already in the district, but not having enough staff. I mean, our student population has dropped. You know, people say maybe a thousand kids or whatever it is, is not significant, but it is because you don't know what next year's going to bring. Our parents going to be afraid to send kids back to the public school systems. And so, you know, I think we need to take a look at that and the teaching staff and try to get monitors in here. Maybe we can get the volunteers back into the schools again, which parents would like to come back. So I think there's a lot of questions on the table here. But thank you, Mr. Smith, for bringing it to us. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess you're leaving us?
Would I say that, can I?
Yes. We're not your boss. Mr. Donovan's your boss. You got to ask him.
Yes, no, he, he's done enough in one night, yes.
Okay, thank you again. We appreciate it. Okay, so now you're up, Mr. Donovan, on the February transfer report?
Okay, before I go to that, I did hand out this other package. Mr. Rodriguez called me midday today. If you recall last night during the budget review, he talked about, he had his, his props and he had his wires and that $180,000, which will be in next year's budget, he wants to use E-Rate on. So we can probably get a, assuming it gets approved by E-Rate, we can get a significant discount. So, but to get the E-Rate, he let me know today that by next week, he needs to, we have to approve a contract for E-Rate and then E-Rate will put it through the process. We're not going to, you know, move forward with it until the end of the school year, but for the E-Rate process, they close the window on funding opportunities for the following year. So that was sort of news to me that this was suddenly coming up. It would have been better since he was here last night to talk about it then. But it is that project where he had his props. And obviously he knew, these bids came in late last week, okay? Thus, the reason that he put $180,000 in the budget is because the lower of the two bids, he did send an RFP on this, the lower the two bids is basically $180,000. So he asked if I would bring an emergency to the meeting, an emergency request, which I don't like to do. But he did do his homework. He did send out an RFP. We did only get two responses to that RFP. They're both here. TNT had a, had a quote of $179,995 and Fiber Next had one of 205,107. So he is requesting that you approve the TNT contract to move forward on the project that he discussed last night for the fiber panel and cable upgrades.
So if it's an E-Rate, how much of a savings is it?
You don't know until you put it in. It has to get approved and then they'll give you a percentage. It varies. I think you could save as much as 40% and, but you may only save 15%.
I guess 15 is bigger than no percent.
Sure.
Can I, can I ask what E-Rate is?
E-Rate is, on your cell phone bill, you have a number of taxes and one of those taxes, they take those funds and they put them in. It's a government program and it's used mostly for schools and municipalities to work on technology, to upgrade technology. And so basically they take some of those funds and reduce the cost of us doing the project, which gives us a reason to move ahead sooner than we may typically do.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
So I'm seeing some of the fiber replaces for fire state, multiple fire stations, traffic building, city hall, fire alarms, wastewater, that's all in this. Is there a chance that we're going to get any kind of a extra help from the city on this?
Well, very good question. When I had seen this, when he first spoke about it, for this, according to Mr. Rodriguez, for this to work, you have to do it citywide. So the reality is putting it into E-Rate, we may get a discount on all of it, but since a, and the city told him originally, they don't have it in their budget to do this. Now, if we can submit it, E-Rate, get a, let's say we get one of the larger discounts, but even then, I think we're going to reach out to the city and say, wait a minute, this, this isn't, shouldn't be all on our nickel, it should be on some of yours. We'll be obviously more than happy to share the savings through E-Rate, but I think they should chip in something, yes. I have not personally had a discussion with the city yet. Mr. Rodriguez did and he was told it's not in their budget currently.
So there's no, so there's no commitment at this point, but we are going to follow up and say, listen, we're trying to work hard to get as many discounts as possible, make it as cost effective as possible, but, you know, we can't, we shouldn't take the whole hit from the education budget.
No, we shouldn't, to be fair.
Okay, so let's be fair with the mayor here, I guess, and his budget, because the budget is his budget until the Alderman accepts his budget and all the departments go through it. So that $180,000 that we're rounding it up, that's for the whole city or is that just for the school district?
That's the whole city.
For the whole city. I have a real problem. I understand to accept this with the E-Rate, but I have a real problem. He confined the money for the teacher's contract that he stood here on December 20th, impeded the process and he can't find money, a little squabbly amount like this because, and I always said, millions of dollars, you vote like that, $150,000 takes three hours on debating. So I will, this is my problem and the committee can do whatever they want and I know I want to save the money, but I guess can we vote on this? Does it have to be a full vote that can't say contingent upon the city?
Well, I, I think you'd have to vote so that I could then submit it to E-Rate to see if we can get funds. Could we also make it contingent upon the amount of funds we receive and therefore maybe do the project, maybe not do the project? You know, the, the discussion that took place between the city and RIT was between the two IT directors. It didn't, I did not personally speak to the CFO or the mayor or anyone above that person. It was only the two IT directors speaking. So is there a possibility that they'd be willing to kick something in? Possibly that just conversation hasn't taken place because I didn't think it needed to be done immediately until I found out this afternoon. So it kind of complicated things a little bit.
It has because, you know, if we need some of this money for something in our budget, we're now paying for the city and we're supposed to be autonomous from the city. So the city is now putting their portion on us that we don't have any rights to pay for because we're not part of technically the city and the spending type of thing.
Right, but the, but the technology itself, you can't just do it in half of the buildings. You have to do it in all of them. So if we want to improve ours, which we've had issues at Mount Pleasant, we had issues at Central Office. If this happened at one of the high schools and then they were down for a couple days, I mean, it would be relatively catastrophic. So I, I totally understand your feelings, but on the other hand, it's almost like, well, you know, can, I guess the question is, can we get something in return from the city? I think it would only be fair if we could. But on the other hand, do we want to, if we can get a good deal and it's going to help our network, shouldn't we still try to do that? So that, that's kind of where I am.
I think, and this is, this is part of what Mr. Rodriguez was talking about last night. So it's kind of, we're a little bit prepared for it already. It just is coming up sooner than we expected.
Right. The E-Rate piece of it. So you have to sort of send to E-Rate, yes, here's a contract, we have a, this is what the cost will be for us.
Already got the bid prepared.
Yes.
I mean, I think we, I think we're in a place where we do have to do it and ultimately, as Mr. Rodriguez was mentioning last night, if one link in the chain is missing, the entire system is kind of not going to hold up. And I think this is also working towards better redundancy back and forth as well between the different systems. And hopefully on good faith, the city will do what's right.
Good faith, it's good faith.
All right.
Before you make a motion, did you have any questions?
Yeah, well, my question was if, if he, if the, the thing is submitted to E-Rate, we get a good rate and everything and then the city turns around, doesn't want to give us, you know, their share, do we, can we say forget it? We're not going to do it at all or is it too late for that?
Could we maybe? Do we want to? Do we want to take that chance? You know, it's sort of like, you know, you get two friends, you go out to dinner and, you know, I forgot my credit card, can you pay for me? And, you know, it's like, you know, it, you really, you both want to eat. We both want this. Are they going to take advantage of us? Like I said, I haven't, I haven't, I wouldn't suggest that that's where they are at this point. I'm just, all I'm passing on to you because it's so early in the process is the two IT directors, one told the other, I, I can't help you with this. But that doesn't, you know, we can go to his boss, we can go to other people and ask and they may, they may say, yeah, we'll, we'll throw our credit card into.
All right. I move to award the contract for fiber upgrade to TNT for $179,995.
I second it.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so we've got that taken care of. You can tell the mayor that because we're covering the whole city, he can pay for two years on the teacher's contract.
Well, he's going to have to, he's going to have to pay for some of it, that's for sure.
Okay, now, now we have the transfer report?
Okay, so as we're, I'll just go through these quickly. As we're heading into springtime, you're going to see more transfer entries like this where they're moving funds from one budgeted account within their school or their program to another one. So, and you'll notice the first, the first one here is the CTE program and they're moving from equipment to educational supplies, educational supplies and the food program is food. And they have, the reason that this being done, they had opened a number of what we call open POs. So you create a PO, let's say to Hannaford for $2,000 and then you can spend up to that amount and then once you've hit two grand, you have to do it again. So that's, that's what this one is. That's also what the second one is, is one for lumber, et cetera. At Bellatets, Belltates, however, that's, I never say that right. So for woodworking, so it's the same sort of thing. And the next one is the same sort of thing where it was an open PO with Home Depot. So those were all CTE transfers. Next one is Dr. Crisp and they did an entry, they didn't really even have to do it, they just moved it from ed supplies to office supplies. You don't have to do that. They're both in the six one series of accounts, but they did it and we put it in. The next one is the Franklin Street Preschool. They didn't spend a lot of their supply money this year because last year they had a lot of excess, they bought a number of supplies. So what they're doing is they're moving from supplies into equipment to buy some cabinets for the classrooms so they can keep the supplies, et cetera, in. Next one is Bicentennial and they're just moving conference and seminars that they didn't go to this year or they don't plan on going to, into miscellaneous equipment to buy some relatively small equipment based on the amounts. The next one is Central Office, the ELL Group and they're moving supply costs to transportation. The next one goes back to the technology, the CTE program and they're moving money from software into supplies for the most part. Mount Pleasant is transferring from a number of different accounts, five different accounts into ed supplies. That's, you'll see that, they're sort of consolidating, said they didn't spend those, they'll put it into ed supplies and they'll make their purchases over the next couple months out of that account. Okay, the next one is to cover some legal costs. Our legal costs are above our budget again, they have been the last three years. So this is moving, these costs up top are related to programs. One of its for our AEDs, we had some extra money in that budget line this year and the others are for some student support services. We provide some money in each, it's about 15,000 or so, 15 to 20 grand to cover Destination Imagination and Lego and that. We, we buy the kit or we give a little stipend to someone to run those programs and they really, because of COVID, haven't run those the last couple of years. But we, we want to keep that in the budget. Hopefully they can do it next year, but we're taking those funds since we didn't spend them to cover the, the legal excess. Next one, the big long one, that's Lisa, the queen of detail, and she's gone through and as she mentioned last night, she budgets in each one of the sports, various things like officials and transportation. And now as these sports close out, she takes those extra monies and she moves them, she's moving them into the equipment repair to cover football helmets, shoulder pads, et cetera.
Can I ask a question? I got a call today and I was going to send out an email, maybe you can find out for me while we're discussing this. I had a grandparent call me that's saying, I believe it was Nashua High School South, the girls softball, that they don't have uniforms, that they're all ripped, that they, they were going to be charged $1,000 for her to be in the, or could you have, ask Dr. McKinney that I could speak to Ms. Gingrich about that? Because I know we have to ask permission to do that. Or should I just send him an email myself?
Yeah, send an email to me and copy him if you want and then we can, I, I don't, I mean, there's no $1,000.
I know, I may, I just, but I figured I might as well just speak to her because I got the call today after we were talking about this last night and I just want to make sure that I get, I get to speak to her and get all the information and if I need any additional information, I can go back and forth with her. Okay, so I'll just let him know that I mentioned it at the meeting tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, she could certainly fill you in on all the uniforms as far as the situation, you know, that we did, keep in mind, uniforms, the way we've been paying for uniforms is the fees that we collect from students and parents going to football, basketball, hockey games, things like that. We take that money and that's what we use to buy uniforms. It's, it's in a special revenue fund and at the end of the budget, we'll be going through the special revenue funds. But when we didn't have anybody the last two years, had very few people paying money to go to sport because we had very few people even attending the sport if the sport was played. So she did push off some of the purchases because that... So she did push off some of the purchases because that account, when we look at that at the end of the budget, you'll find that there's not a lot of money left in there. So she might have to start looking at some other ways to purchase the uniforms or to stretch out the time, I'm not sure. Okay. Okay, then there's a, another CTE where they're moving monies from equipment to supplies accounts. Then another Nashua Athletics from Lisa. There's a Charlotte Ave entry, moving supplies to equipment to buy a refrigerator for the school. Fairgrounds Middle, moving from computer accounts to supply accounts. And the last two, there's another CTE one to cover the cost of culinary uniforms. And the last one is Bicentennial, moving from seminars into miscellaneous equipment to purchase a sound system for the school. So as I mentioned, you'll see more of these moving. We want people to put the things to the right account. We'd rather they move the budget, put the budget in the right place, so then when you go back and look at the actual costs, they're in the right place. So.
So we haven't had a lot of travel lately in the last two years.
No.
Because going to seminars. Are we going to keep seminars in for travel in the budget?
There's a number in there, but it's, it's a relatively small, small number.
Compared to what we used to have?
Yes.
We used to have people traveling to hotels, foods.
But a lot of that was grant-related, and even, even now, there's, there's very little travel. Most of the travel that you see for the most part is local travel in hotels, maybe for conferences and things like that, up at the White Mountains or something like that. There's not a lot of air travel or, or things, there's, I mean, this 21st Century program, the number of four or five of them went down to Florida, there's a conference down there. They did that, it was charged to the grant. But yeah, there's not a lot of travel.
Everything is Zoom more now.
Yeah.
I take all my classes, a lot of them on Zoom. I don't like it, but I like one-to-one interaction. Get distracted. Okay, do we need to make a motion to accept this? No.
There's one, yeah, you should.
Okay.
Because there's one over 10,000.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the financial report for February 2022.
Second it.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, the next one we have is the, what is it? The fiscal report for.
Yep, financial report.
Financial report. Yeah, I don't have my paper in front of me somewhere.
Okay, so we'll be reviewing the second of the two reports, the month-by-month ones, the ones we've been doing the last, most of this year. Looking at the wages, full-time and part-time, February's a four-week pay month and a two-by-weekly, which most months are. And you can see, for example, October was exactly the same, that was 6.5, this is 6.5. November was the same, that was a 6.7. So basically, the cost of a, a month where you have two bi-weeklies, which are, those are the salaried people getting paid, and the weeklies, which are the hourly weekly, is in the ballpark of about 6.5 million. So it's pretty consistent, the wages part-time falls into line with the last few months. Overtime went up a little bit, and I think most of that was due to some snow plowing. We had a few, couple of storms, and so there was some cost there. Wages per diem is the subs, that number's been, you know, running about 100,000 a month with the limited number of subs that we do have. Longevity, we did pay in January, as you can see, the 455,000. There were a couple, there were four people that had a $500 that had just reached the longevity, and they weren't on the list. So that's what that 2,000 is. That should wrap up that account. Additional hours is any, the extra work done by teachers or psychologists or people like that, it's running as it has, if you look at it compared to most of the other months, nothing extraordinary there. Stipends, this month had the middle school winter stipend, winter coach stipends, which is about 18,000. And the rest of that is mostly the head teacher stipends that are paid each month. Retirement and separation pay, this month, the Title I director resigned, so there was a cost for that person. And then there were a couple of custodians and I think a secretary or two that had some vacation time that we paid out. So that, pretty much, the labor's kind of running like we expect. Probably, I'm going to be starting my forecast for this, probably the first time I'll bring it to this meeting will be in April.
Okay.
I, I have a question about the, the additional hours under July. It's probably a misprint, it says 364,000.
No, that's true because that's, that's the summer school programs.
Okay, I hope I didn't ask this question, the same question last time. Thank you.
No, the additional hours, the two months that it's the highest is July and August because of summer school. Okay, fringe benefits, like I said, mostly transferred over from the city, so it is what it is. Looking at the next few accounts, nothing in there is out of ordinary. I review the detail of each one, and the costs there are fine. Flipping over to the property services, if you take a look there, you'll see electricity has a negative number. So when we did the project with EEI, which is just about done, where we put in all the energy-saving equipment at the two high schools, and we have that, we have a payment now of about 450,000, we received a check for about 450,000 as a rebate on this equipment. So it's in that account right now. We may end up changing the way we account for it because I think the, it depends on how the rebate, I didn't expect to see this high a rebate right away, but how the rebate was factored into the calculation on the debt payment. So we put it in here for now because we wanted to cash the check. I didn't want that sitting around the safe for too long. So, but that's why that account is actually negative this month. But I'll update you, I'm meeting with Sean and Mike Davey, the EEI project manager, and we're going to talk about how we're going to deal with the rebates going forward. Okay, heating gas, February's typically your second biggest month, March is going to be the highest month, so at the end of March, we'll have a decent sense of where we are, but I think we're going to be fine on that for the year. And water, we should be fine with too, it's pretty steady. Most of the other accounts there, the maintenance accounts are sort of moving along according to plan. The only one that's sort of above budget, if you look at the vehicle repairs and maintenance, it's over budget, so Sean may have to move some funds from one of his other accounts into there. Right now, he's got enough in some of his other maintenance accounts to cover it, but.
On the vehicle repair maintenance, where do we repair the vehicles? At the City Barn? Or do we take them out?
No, we, the City Barn will repair our two large trucks, and if, we just bought that new loader, but they would prepare those, those kind of things. But the, most of the vans and those things, we, we bring to local dealers. I don't know if they use the same one every time, they probably use two or three different ones.
Do we get a good deal from them if we brought everything to them? Better deal with these deals? Let's make a deal here tonight.
I, I, I have not actually looked, I, I don't know the answer to that, I, you know, I can check with Sean. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not sure we, we go out, because for a vehicle repair, it's a different thing each time, right? They're not gonna, are they going to give you a cheaper rate because you bring all your vehicles? No.
You don't know. Because are they, some of these under dealer warranties or these out of dealer warranties?
This is out of dealer warranties.
Okay.
Yeah, if it, if it's in a warranty, we'll bring it to the dealer, but, you know, most of it's the, the older vehicles that are.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question about the rebate. Is that something that would be getting just one? Is that a one-time thing or is that something that will happen more often? And will it be the same amount?
It will be a one-time thing per sort of type of equipment. So if this rebate was related to lights, then it would be the one time. But then there will be other rebates related to other pieces, like transformers may have another rebate. But typically, the rebates are given within the first year of installing the equipment, and it's just a one-time. But you're getting, if we're getting these large checks coming in for rebates, and then we have to make these payments, I want to make sure that we're applying them correctly against the payments. Okay. Okay, other services, telephone is headed once again, like, when I talked about the budget a week or so ago, we're gonna, we need to budget it higher because it's running higher. There is a, a phone audit going on, that's been going on for months, and I keep asking, Mr. Rodriguez, are we done? Are we done? We should be seeing that in the next couple of months, coming to this, this committee meeting, and then maybe we can start to see this go down instead of go up. Rest of these accounts, if you look, it's relatively small dollars. There's not, you know, the budgets for these amounts, 11,000, 14,000, relatively small amounts, and a lot of these are areas where individual schools make the budgets. Okay, then you look at the very last one, the 55690, the regular transportation services, those are the, the big buses, so to speak. That's what it says on the invoice, big bus and small bus. But as I mentioned, we were behind by a few months, so this is the beginning of the catch-up. This is two months. There's still two months. If they were to catch up, if in March we got two months, we'd be fully caught up. My guess is they're only going to get one in March, and so we're going to have another double month, but at least they're, they finally started to come in. And then on the, the next page, you see the same for the special ed transportation. That one had a three-month catch-up. So the 944 is very large, but it's for previous months because if you look back in, in December and September, there's, you know, very low numbers. Tuition out of district, sort of running as we expect. We're going to have a meeting in two or three weeks to sort of look at the detail student by student, to make sure that we still think we're going to end up close to budget, which this is the first year we've seen that in a long time. Okay, supplies and materials, most of these accounts in the beginning, all the educational supplies, testing, those are sort of school-related. That's where they spend most of their funds, typically in the miscellaneous and the educational supplies. Then you get the Mr. Smith's accounts, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, janitorial, et cetera. So those all still have balances, but they'll go through, sort of, they purchase a lot of things in the beginning of the year or the end, and so I'm sure you'll, those will ramp up as the year goes on. And then towards the end, you'll see sort of the library slash curriculum-type accounts, media, periodicals, subscriptions, and books. And you could already see that sort of the, the, there's a negative number in subscriptions, but there's still a positive number in books, which tells me that they probably budgeted it one way and then said, oh no, we're going to go to the online version and chose subscriptions instead. Indirect costs, like I said, that's the percentage we get back as a credit for managing the grants. So we are at 204,000, we have four months left. The budget was 210. 210's been the budget for a long time, but the grants this year are higher. Not only do we have the SIR funds, but we also have the Title I and the IDEA are probably 500,000 higher than they were. So this number will be positive in the, in the, it's a negative number, but it'll be positive as far as the budget's concerned. And equipment, not too much action there this month. Most of that is spent in the beginning and at the end of the year. And other than that, not too much activity. Year-to-date, we're at 58.68%, and we're like 68, 60% through the, through the school year, so, so far, so good. At this point, like I said, when I dig in and do the detailed forecast, which I'll probably share, whether it be, I'll probably do it, I'll do it through March, try to get it for the April meeting, but if not, it'll be in the May meeting. And that'll let us know typically, it'll be a good estimate of how much, how much money we'll have left over. Because this year, we do have, there's a lot of Paris positions that aren't filled, so there's money there. We have had to spend some money on outside agencies to get people in, especially the sped-type specialists like SLPs and Sykes and people like that, and that costs a lot more to do that. We have used SIR funds for some of that, but some of them, some of the costs are in here. So we'll see how it works out, but at this point, I think, I think we'll be fine.
Any questions from anybody from the committee? Ms. Brand? Okay, so we should be all set because we do not have to make a motion to accept this, which is nice.
Nope.
I always get confused between the two of them. So do I hear motion to adjourn? So moved.
All seconded.
Perfect. So we're adjourned at 7:20 this evening. Thank you all, appreciate it.